I'd like to call the November nineteenth school board meeting to order, please. This is the time and the place for the regular school board meeting. Welcome to all of you who are with us this evening. And welcome to... Maybe somebody else wants to say it?
Okay.
And welcome to our audience who'll be watching us on Delain Broadcast. Allow me to introduce the directors at the table with me. From the right, we have Ross Harris, Janelle Carter, and Mike Miller. From the left, we have Karina Hernandez, Sean Heitman. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold, the Board Secretary. And to my left is Dr. Theran Schudy, the Superintendent of Schools, and I'm B. Nebly. We had a pink sheet on the table if anybody else wants to...
(laughing).
No, hang on to it. To sign, to visit with us during a public comment section. According to board policy, you have five minutes to speak with us, but we will not be able to respond to your comments, but we thank you for them anyway. Read with me the Marshalltown mission. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." And stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Carter Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero. Just Carter.
October was a big month as far as for Stacy at District Register for our certified enrollment, and we've been honored with the Gold Star Award because of Stacy's work and Maya Mello, who's not here tonight, but I'd like to recognize Stacy for all her hard work for our certified enrollment. She puts in long hours and is very dedicated to the job, and now if she can speak about it, that'll be...
It makes it all worth it, the long hours, the early mornings, the late nights, and the weekends, it makes it all worth it.
Thank you.
How many hours, how many hours do you think it takes to do all of it?
I don't take vacations during the summer, and I'll come in probably about six o'clock in the morning, and there's times that I work till probably twelve-thirty or one AM. And then I work the weekends, trying to get everything with the open enrollment versus regular enrollment versus placements versus everything. And this year with the online, trying to get that going too, it was, there was a lot going on.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts with the certified enrollment under normal circumstances, but then, you know, when you have the kind of mobility that we do annually, it makes it that much more complicated. And so, having done it myself, I know how big a challenge it is, and Stacy does an outstanding job as well as Mylan, the others that help her do that. So we're very proud of her continued accomplishment, because this is the second consecutive year I've made. And I told her if she could've got us ninety students instead of us losing ninety students, I would've had her double gold stars.
I told you, we were cleaning up the tornado that we were gonna get this year out of the third one.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next recognition is for the school board in general. As all of you know, we attended the Iowa Association of School Boards' annual convention last Wednesday and Thursday. On Thursday, the Marshalltown Board was named one of nine in the state who had a majority of their board members that accumulated better boardsmanship points or received the individual recognition along with myself, that we got the team award. So that was really nice for Marshalltown to be highlighted. We were given a plaque which will hang proudly at the entrance, although it's not up yet to join the plaque from last year. As I've said, it's just really important that we continue to learn together in order to figure out together what we need to do to help all kids be successful. So I have individual achievement awards for all of the board members. Sean, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ross. Congratulations. Janelle. And B. And I also have a delay thank you card for Ross for his service to our country that we missed at the last meeting, so thank you very much. Service to our country and our school district.
Moving on to the consent agenda, looking at the minutes of November fifth. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to those? The minutes of the board work session on November first. Are there any items of note and personnel, Mr. Sprejas?
No.
Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, we have a couple of agreements, and we have nine special education students out of district. In open enrollments, we have seven out, which is to continue services after they have made a move. Looking at bills, do we have anything of note?
Paulette?
Any questions for Paulette? We have a fifteen hundred dollar grant from the Monsanto Fund for MHS Robotics. Any questions on the financial report?
Notice there wasn't a financial report.
Where is it? Yes, we are still, once we get through the line item budget, which I'm almost done, then you will have a financial report with that budget included.
Can we eliminate two point zero eight from the consent agenda because we don't have one to approve?
So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus two point oh eight?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero. And now we have some people on the com. Mr. Nevins.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Nevins, and I came to talk about early retirement. As public budgets have grown tighter over the past decade, states and schools, districts across the country have sought ways to control the growth of spending. One increasingly common strategy employed into rain costs to offer experienced teachers a high salary, financial incentives to retire early. The MEA is asking for the Marshalltown School Board to approve early retirement for the eighteen-nineteen school year. We would like to ask you to do this because we want to allow teachers to have the voluntary early retirement incentive program to serve to assist qualified long-term employees in their transition from public service. We feel that it provides those professionals who have dedicated a large portion of their lives to this district to be truly supported in their post-career lives with benefits that they deserve to have provided, for example, healthcare. And competitive benefits and salaries draw high-quality, successful teachers to our district. Great teachers see every, great leaders see every teacher opening as an opportunity to bring in a dynamic educator for our students and our community. We hope you approve. Thank you.
Mr. B.
Good evening. Most of those here this evening know me as Rachel Loopy, an eighteen-year business teacher and maybe even as the person on the MEA negotiations team that focuses always on the numbers. That is not the part of me here that is speaking tonight. I'm Rachel Loopy, wife of Mike Loopy, who is an MHS teacher and coach of nearly thirty years. I'm here speaking on his behalf because he is at the pool tonight preparing for the MHS swim team for their first swim meet tomorrow, which is going to be at Des Moines East. We invite you all to come and cheer on Wildcats. The reason I tell you this is because even though he knows it would be better for his future to be here speaking on behalf of himself tonight, he's where he almost always is, working with the MHS student and athletes, and they are focusing on their futures, not his tonight. Mike has consistently given his whole heart and soul to the students of MHS for, like I said, nearly thirty years, and does not view his teaching and coaching as a job. It is his passion and his love. Although teaching is his passion, we have seven-year-old twins at home who need him and that teaching at home, and he is ready to retire and be a stay-at-home dad. Others are ready to retire and be a stay-at-home grandparents, but he's gonna be a dad. As such, he and the other staff that are eligible respectfully ask that the board vote in favor for the early retirement, which includes the insurance provision. For the entire fifteen years of our marriage, my family has given the Marshalltown School District the very best thing we have, our hus- my husband and their father. We would appreciate it if the board would honor their loyal employees by passing early retirement tonight. Please do not think I'm not interested in the rest of the meeting, but I may be leaving to pick up those twins from the pool and Mike tonight. So thank you for offering me the opportunity to speak on behalf of early retirement this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Nevins.
Good evening. I'm Rodney Van Nuys, I'm the principal at Anson Elementary. And to my left, I have Ms. Langkema, who is preparing. She's our XLP teacher. And I have Ms. Chima, our guidance counselor. We're gonna talk to you about a few things that we have been really emphasizing this year at Anson. And, you know, every year we continue to look at ways that we can serve all kids, and this year we're looking through the lens of reaching the whole child. So we're exploring a lot of different possibilities. And three areas that we really wanna focus on and bring your attention to tonight are our focus on our attendance, being proactive toward behavior, and student STEM extension. I'll talk first. I'm gonna talk a little bit about our attendance, a little bit of history. Last year, our attendance dropped to just under ninety-four percent and for the year, and our chronic absenteeism last year was just north of eleven percent. Our attendance team met every two weeks, and that generally is myself, Ms. Chima, and Mr. Sellers, our social worker, and we keep seeing the same names, you know, the same names over and over. And no matter whether we called the families, whether we went to visit the families, you know, set up contracts, it never seemed to change. So we felt we needed to change some processes and work on not only getting the kids there, but making the kids wanna be there, providing that motivation for kids so that they wanted to get up and they wanted to be at school on time. So we made a few changes. Some of them were changes going back to some things that we had done before, and some of them were pretty new. So one of the first things we did was look at breakfast in the classroom. Last year, we went to a breakfast in the classroom model that put all of our kids in the gym, and the kids would go down together, and when they finished eating, they could go outside. And what we found were a lot of our kids were skipping breakfast to get outside earlier. And, you know, we wanted kids to get fresh air, we wanted them to be outside, but they also need to eat, they need to have that nutrition, they need to be there ready to go. So I spoke with Lynn Large, and we talked about going back to the model we've had in the past of breakfast in the classroom. Overwhelmingly, our teachers favored that, wanting to go back, because what we were losing, our kids were coming in at about eight-twenty and getting ready, and we start classes at eight-thirty. So we were losing a relationship piece with our kids. The teachers had really no time, especially our third grade goes specials first, so their kids would literally come into the classroom and leave. So we lost that piece of getting to know our kids. So we've changed that this year, so our kids go out at eight o'clock, they come in at eight-ten, and then they go straight to the rooms and they eat breakfast in the classroom, and they have a very valuable fifteen minutes with their teacher where they can just see how their day, how their night went, if they're ready to start school. And part of building that relationship is you can look at kids and you can talk to them, and you know whether they had a rough night. We know that a lot of our kids do have rough nights. The more we learn about trauma-informed care that Ashley and I have started working on, the more that we know that we need to be able to talk to those kids and let them know that they're welcomed and they're safe at school to get their day started off correctly. So it's been a great change as far as getting our kids in. Now we know they're all eating breakfast, our breakfast numbers in the morning are up substantially because the kids are eating and coming in and being ready to go. With that piece, we also added the morning meeting process. The district as a whole has gone to that this year. We had decided last year that it was something that we were going to do, and it's been great. Our teachers are taking to it. Basically involves, just in a very general way, a morning greeting. Every child greets every other child in the morning, and they kind of talk about, you know, maybe something, they'll have a different topic, maybe it's something that they're going to be dealing with that day, and the teacher will weave that through the morning meeting. Maybe it's something they will talk about, you know, friendships and how we treat our friends, and, you know, our expectations are at Anson are to be respectful, to be responsible, and to be an active worker. So it could be those things too. So that's another ten-minute quick hitter. So we went from having maybe five minutes in the morning to now we have a full thirty minutes with our kids. We bumped our schedule to where it starts at eight-forty, so that was basically our special schedule. So we've given our teachers thirty minutes in the morning to really start building that relationship. And when we do morning meeting, it's every teacher in the building, not just those classroom teachers. Our specials teachers go, Ashley goes, I go, we all go into a classroom just to talk with kids and just to meet them on a very informal basis before their instruction starts. So we've seen some positives from that one. Every morning, Ashley and I check, generally it ends up being Ashley because I get pulled somewhere else, way to go. We check our daily attendance, and every class that has one-hundred percent attendance every day gets one of these flags. We have enough of these flags for our entire building. So every morning, we'll go through, we'll check attendance, and if they're there and they're on time, we hang these flags in their rooms in the morning. The kids love these flags. The kids absolutely love the flags, and so do the teachers. It's a great motivator for our kids to be there and to be on time. We'll go to the first slide there. Every morning, and when we do the flags, this is on our front wall, when you walk into the front of the building, we do this each quarter, and we put up stars for every day that they have perfect attendance, and if you'll see, you'll see a lot of tens up there. So far this year, we've had over three hundred instances of classrooms having perfect attendance. The first quarter, we had two classrooms that tied that had about twenty-five, twenty-five perfect attendances each, so the kids love it. I know that Ms. Langkema meets with kids for morning duty in the morning, the kids count the stars, they wanna know who's in the lead, who's got the most each time. This was actually toward the end of the first quarter, but the kids love this piece, and it's, you know, it's a huge motivator for kids. So far, we're seeing positive results. Right now, we're holding at ninety-seven percent daily attendance, which is a four percent more than we were at this time last year, which is substantial because we know the challenging time is winter. Winter's when attendance will dip everywhere, so we wanna have that attendance up so that we can kind of counteract that piece. We've had several days of ninety-eight percent attendance, and we've had a couple of days where we literally had one child missing from the entire building. Our chronic absenteeism right now is sitting at three point one-three percent. I think the district is at about five point four, so we're substantially, substantially below that right now. So, you know, by motivating kids to be at school, we're still working with the parents and making contracts, but when you can motivate the kids to be at school, it makes a huge difference. So that's kind of where we're at right now with that one. So positive results so far, we're hoping to keep those going through the winter, and we'll give you an update in the spring. We, the second part we talked about was taking a proactive approach toward behavior. I found some research this summer out of Illinois that in summer two thousand and fifteen, their state legislature passed a law that basically put a zero tolerance on any suspensions over three days in school. And it was to take effect in September two thousand and sixteen. So five of their districts took an approach, they took their seclusion rooms, and we all, a seclusion room is where we make, if a child is escalating or they're really out of hand and they're not being safe to themselves, we may take them to this room to calm down. So what we've done is taken our seclusion room and turned it into a peace room. And Ashley's gonna talk to you a little bit more about that. What these five school, what these five districts saw, and one of these districts was the district that included Chicago Public, was a substantial decrease in their out-of-school suspensions. Obviously, we don't have a lot of out-of-school suspensions, but we're looking at it as a proactive way to talk to our kids and to calm them down before they reach that plateau where they're gonna miss a lot of instruction and maybe hurt themselves. So we're trying to take an approach in a way that we can stop that so it actually starts. And I'll let Ashley talk a little bit about that.
If you wanna go to the next slide. So here, after doing some of our research, after Mr. Nevins brought this to my attention, it's very simple things, but they are things that are calming, and it's an area where a student can feel safe and feel comfortable and find a way to calm down. So we have multiple areas. Here you have, obviously, it's, the lighting is very important, so it's just a lamp that we have, so we don't have the ceiling lights on. But then we also have two bean bags, and then you can see on the floor that there are yoga mats. And then if you go to the next slide, the one has, in the bucket is a weighted blanket. So there are kids who need that kind of, that extra kind of calming down piece. And so this weighted blanket is just a blanket that's a little bit of weight that they put on them, that relaxes them, and it kind of puts them into a state where we can eventually pop. And then on the other one is a box with, and a table that has some coloring pages, crayons, and then there's also some fidget toys that, when I was doing some research on, that this was helpful for them. And then there is a timer in there, and the kids have a choice of setting a timer for ten or fifteen minutes. And we have found that based on that research that it gives a kid at least fifteen minutes to calm down and get to a point where they're able to discuss what their, what happened, why they were maybe upset, or what was bothering them, and then leads to what our plan is for the next. And this also kind of corresponds with the trauma-informed care training that I attended last year in Boston, was trying to plan and make sure that they are able to return and have a successful rest of their day.
And Ms. Langkema's gonna talk to us about some stuff we're doing with the student STEM extension so far.
Anson Elementary was awarded a Making STEM Connections program from the Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council, and that's allowed us to start our own Makerspace at the school. The Makerspace consists of a large cart with supplies to facilitate all the types of creative projects you would assume. I brought a couple here just to show, we have 3D pen, motors, alligator clips, this is electric tape where they can make paper circuits. We've got, I don't know if you know about these Strabies building kits where kids can build whatever that they want to, and then some Cubletz robotic blocks, and I'll talk about those more in a few minutes. But it's got everything from sewing machines, hot glue guns, pretty much everything you can possibly imagine that kids can build or create, but, and of course, lots and lots of lidoes. There's also books for teachers and students to facilitate ideas as well as guide instruction. I use this a lot with my XLP students, but the great thing about this is that it's available for all students at Anson, not just the XLP kids. There's mini-challenge bags that we've put together where it has a mini-challenge on it. Teachers can check these out for early finishers or inside recess opportunities. They can take any of these materials from the Makerspace to use within their classrooms for different projects. We allow possibilities for kids to just freely create as well as create ties to the curriculum and things that the kids are already learning about in their classrooms. The Makerspace is just beginning, in fact, our cart hasn't quite arrived yet, but I just thought it would be useful to you guys to see a few examples of how we're using it with students. I've been using the Cubletz blocks with students, it teaches them if-then coding as well as problem-solving as they build different things. I have some students who read the book Diary of a Worm and then use the 3D pen to make their own worms, which they're writing their own journals for their worms now. Let's see, I've had, our special education teacher has taken some of the challenge bags and worked with students, and she said that her kids really loved it, there was no one right answer, they could solve the problems how they wanted to solve the problems, which is kind of the purpose of the Makerspace. One of our EL teachers is using the 3D pen right now for her students to create letters that are, it makes plastic letters, and then they're gonna use those letters to create their own words and talk about the sounds and things like that. So there's a lot of different ways that this Makerspace can be used, and so we're just really excited about all the opportunities that this will give the Anson students.
That is our short showcase for tonight. We just wanted to highlight those three things that we're excited about the possibilities for everything Nicole's doing and everything Ashley's doing with the peace room. We're seeing already some results from the peace room. Again, Ashley said fifteen minutes, and some kids sometimes it will take up to an hour to get them back into the classroom, and we've already cut that by seventy-five percent on certain kids. We know it's not gonna be successful with every child, but our goal is to try to help as many as we can in as many different ways as we can. So, any questions?
Peace room get used every day?
Yes.
Multiple times a day?
Yeah.
One of the things we're doing is we've started working with teachers, and they know that they don't have to find one of us to go to the room. It's right there, it's always open, that light is always on, and they know where the timer is, and some of our kids, it would probably be considered a tier-two or a tier-three in age, and if those kids are even becoming accustomed to using the room, we can go in and say ten or fifteen, and they'll set the timer themselves and be able to come out generally when it's done.
So is there an option for them, or is this something that they can also ask for?
They can ask for it, and we have students that ask for it.
Okay.
Do you know if any of the other buildings are celebrating perfect attendance and tracking it like Anson is?
We've actually had a couple that were processed about the flags and where we got the flags, so I think you're gonna see more buildings doing it. We've also added a quarterly title, so they get like a traveling trophy, so that those classes keep that trophy, and they get to keep it for the whole thing, and then we'll do a big celebration for those classrooms at the end of the year.
Other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Jane, you're all alone tonight.
Hi, everyone. There are two things I'll talk to you about today. The first thing is the All-State Music Festival. Last Saturday, seven MHS students performed in the All-State Music Festival at Iowa State University. These students were selected to perform after their All-State auditions that took place on October twentieth. The All-State Music Festival is very selective, so it was great to have so many MHS band, orchestra, and choir members chosen. The next thing I'll talk to you about is the Friday Night Dances. Last year, Mrs. Chandler, an English teacher at Marshalltown High School, worked to bring back Friday Night Dances at the high school. The dances were held after all home football and basketball games that were on Friday nights. Last year's dances were a huge success, so they brought them back this year, and now they're held monthly rather than after every game. Tickets are five dollars, so the dances are great ways to fundraise for many things. There was a dance for Tomato Relief earlier this year, and there was one for the King family who lost their home in a fire last year. The next dance is December fourteenth after the boys' basketball game, and the dances are something positive at MHS right now. Any questions?
I didn't know the dancers stopped. That's awesome.
The next item is recognized after the handbook's been approved this summer that Miller Handbook had not been updated in an area, that we haven't updated all handbooks relative to headlights. And so Stacy Toll Crawford took a look at their policy within the handbook and has made the adjustment of stretching part of what they had there, or seeking board approval so that their language is consistent with the rest of the district in this regard. or seeking board approval so that their language is consistent with the rest of the district in this regard.
Any questions for Dr. Shutey? May I have a motion to approve the amendment to the Miller School Student Handbook?
Submissed.
Carter Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries six to zero.
So we've got the first blush and the proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school calendar. Knowing that this was the first year that we experienced a calendar, at least as it relates to professional development, this year, we started off by simply trying to replicate this year's calendar on next year. Through discussions with both the administrative team and the calendar committee, we made some adjustments, and I'll kind of walk through that a little bit with you. Beginning of the year was very similar, other than the day that school starts did the way that the calendar rolls from year to year. As you know, we went to a Monday, somewhat monthly professional development model. That exists within here with minor exception, which I'll talk about in a little bit. As we get to winter break, everything's pretty much the same as it was this year until we get to winter break. The way the calendar falls in December next year, January first falls on a Wednesday, so the question was, do we all come back to school, do we not come back to school the second year? Or do staff come back to school and students not? Eventually, I had them scheduled as student and staff return days, but when we talked about it, particularly administratively, there was a great concern amongst a few of the principals in that we would be missing a lot of students potentially, particularly those that take off for an extended period. For us, and those are the school days, so instead of school days, we converted them to staff development days on Thursday and Friday, January first and second. And the reason that we feel it's important to do that versus give another two days of vacation is because where the end of the year falls, because as it stands right now with the schedule as it is, with essentially a start on August twenty-sixth, we'd be finishing the school year, barring no missed days due to weather on Friday, June fifth. So we're just at a point where the calendar rolls later and later until it swings back. So, so those would be professional development days. And what we did was, in order not to push the year out any further, we repurposed the December, I believe it was, Professional Development Day to a Student Day. I can't remember, Lisa, if there was another day that we reworked.
It was November twenty-fifth and December sixteenth.
Okay, so two dates that were Professional Development Days built into the calendar. We just pushed to January second and third in order to have school on those other two days and also to align so that the calendar would be balanced as far as the semesters went. Typically, the first semester is going to end right around Martin Luther King Day. Outside of that, really, everything else is pretty much as it is this year's calendar. Any questions? This is just an information only. What we thought we'd do is, as soon as this board meeting's over, we'll push out a communication in the next couple of days to get feedback from both staff and parents as it relates to the calendar.
I've received some feedback about the timing of spring break not being coordinated with the region universities. And I know that we made, we said in this room we were going to make a commitment to try to do that in the future to...
Yeah, it actually is coordinated with Marshawn Community College, so it should be coordinated with the regions as well.
So I'm looking at it online here, and it looks like this is for twenty. This is, this is March of twenty twenty. And so it looks like online it says there, spring break, University of Iowa is March fifteenth through the twenty-second, in March of twenty twenty. And so...
Yeah, our goal was to align with Marshawn Community College, and typically, they're aligned with the regions. I don't know why, we'd have to check with Marshawn Community College as to why they might not be next year, but the reason being the dual credit programs that our kids are involved with.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, that's certainly a good one to be in sync with, but whether it's family vacations or sports schedules or coordinating with schedules of the schools around us, you know, there's lots of good reasons to be sort of in sync, so maybe we should just look at that again, one more time.
Yeah, I, our, in my opinion, our priority would be to sync with Marshawn Community College because of the number of courses that our high school students take, both on our campus and on their campus.
I agree.
I would say so.
My understanding was that the community college is now, we're all lined up with the regions, but I'm not a hundred percent certain of that. We absolutely want to make sure that that line's going forward, MCC for sure. But we can, we'll double-check the line.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments for Dr. Shutey?
So we'll come back to you next meeting, December third, with input that we receive or trends from that input, as well as possibly asking the board to take action on approval.
Mr. Manas, are you one of our administrators chatting with us? Would you please come forward along with Dr. Stevenson?
Well, the theme of this chapter was development guarantee and viable curriculum. It was a timely chapter, I think we referenced it two or three times today, actually, in the elementary principals' meeting. A lot of it talked about the fact that, you know, there tends often to be gaps sometimes between what is planned and what is implemented. And a lot of times that has to do with how buildings and/or districts are structured in terms of are teachers pretty much operating in isolation within their classrooms? Or are they coordinating their efforts in a purposeful way within grade-level teams or PLCs or across the district and that sort of thing? And a lot of that emphasis was on how PLCs can provide assistance to make sure that what is, what is intended is what gets implemented. Things that stuck out to you reading that chapter, questions that you have?
I don't have any questions, but maybe just a question is like, so how does that apply to our PLCs? Is that true? Does it work? Is, is doing all this helping that, you know, connect that gap, getting everybody on the same page, that thing?
Well, I think one of, you know, when you look at the big ideas of a PLC, what do students need to learn? I mean, I think that that helps, what do students need to learn, how are we going to teach it? I think when you think about those first two things, when you think about the intended curriculum, because you've got to think about implemented versus intended and what goes into that piece. So, you know, when you think about what's implemented, interpretation can come into that piece. It mentions in here, one of the things that I had written was specific student needs. You know, we have very high ELO populations, so there may need to be a lot of background built within that curriculum, and it's going to change from school to school on what those needs are. So that could change the intended curriculum piece. But when you think about what do we, what do our students need to learn and how are we going to do it? That is a big focus when we're talking about our PLCs, because we answer the same four questions every time. What do they need to learn? How are we going to learn it? How are we, how are we going to know if they learned it? What are we going to do if they did? What are we going to do if they did not?
Is it working? Is it working?
Our teachers are buying in, and I think when you think about implementing something as big as professional learning committees, that's communities, that is a huge part of it. I can just speak for Anton, obviously, but our teachers are buying in. I try to attend at least one of their PLC meetings or collaborative team meetings when they, when they put them out on their lesson plans, and they're really buying into it, because if, if nothing else, it provides a very good focus in those meetings, because anyone who's sitting in meetings knows that they can kind of go different directions. But when you're focusing on those questions and your norms, it helps you focus on the curriculum and what you've got to do. You know, they're using those common formative assessments. They're, they're using the data they've gotten from their kids to say, okay, we, we're not getting this, this group is not getting this piece. So how are we going to make sure that they're getting it? And those kids on their formative assessment that are just blowing it out of the water, okay, what are we going to do to keep those kids moving forward? So I think that it's, it's really starting to show a focus within those planning times with those teams so that they're really focused in on, on those, you know, those essential standards and how we're meeting those in the classrooms.
So is it, are you able to measure it then?
Well, we're only, you know, a couple formative assessments, and they've only gotten through probably three units in math, at least at the elementary level. But I think the big mind shift is that our conversations are about learning now, not just teaching. So the teaching part, we've been talking about and improving teacher skills, but, I mean, you can teach your heart out, and if they didn't learn it, then we got to go back, you know? And so I think that's, that's the kind of nice thing too. And the part that stood out to me was that whole conversation about opportunity to learn, because, you know, we should be able to meet anybody at Hy-Vee or anywhere we go, and, you know, if they have a question about how we're using ST Math, what's happening in Go Math multiplication, my kids not learning this or that, like, we should be able to say as a system, this is our guaranteed curriculum. If your kid's in school here in fourth grade, they're getting this over the course of the year, and we do have to pace things a little bit differently for different kids, but you can't be very far from your, whatever your business plan is, so to speak, of what you've laid out for the year, or we get this wonky-looking data. Sometimes where we look like we pull our ST Math data every week, and we saw this thing, like, our third graders just weren't getting through the syllabus the same as everyone else, but yet they have the progress and minutes to be able to do it. So that made us dig in and love, well, there's been some changing of order of things, and there were some things happening that were not part of our guaranteed curriculum, so that gives us a chance to say, hold up, let's go back and put that back the way it was supposed to be, so we can all keep moving forward from there. So I think that's, you know, already access to technology and data that we have, we're able to see much quicker when kids aren't learning the things that we've put into our curriculum as essential.
And I think we're in a different place than we were ten, fifteen years ago, because ten or fifteen years ago, you could move a student from one elementary building to another elementary building, and they would have gaps in their learning because all of the elementaries were not teaching the same thing at the same time.
Yeah, it's like we're on a stair step, like, we've gone from that to now, you know, pulling the curriculum together to now pulling it, the actual meaning of what we're trying to teach together from there.
Good.
I think, and I can't speak as much to the secondary, but I know they're having deeper conversations too about kids who are, like, getting Ds and Fs in those common PLCs, like English and geometry, whatever it may be, and how they can use their ENR time and how they can do these different things to try to bring the question three that Ronnie was saying, well, what are we going to do when they don't learn it? Well, we're going to have to wrap around and work with those kids at a separate time of the day.
The real power, and it comes with these common formative assessments, so as Lisa said, we're in the early stages of refining and or developing those, generally within grade levels in a building or within a neighborhood, you know, at Monahan. And, and once they have that and they start looking at that data, they can, they can see, you know, who's getting, who's getting it, you know, who's learning and who's not, or what classroom is having success teaching a certain skill or topic, and which class is struggling, they can have that conversation about what are you doing differently to get the results that you're getting, so it can be replicated. Or the other thing that I've seen happen in other districts that, as it's evolved, is they start having conversations of how they can work collaboratively together to provide the MTSS-type supports or the tiered supports that allow for those kids that are already getting it to get special attention through one of them possibly, or another one to provide support to those students that aren't. So they come up with creative ways sometimes to provide everybody what they need at that given point in time. The beauty of these assessments is they happen with regularity. It's not like you're waiting nine weeks to find out, you know, like with a summative test or unit test or something. It's like weekly assessments where they can, at a moment's notice, change the game plan a little bit to ensure that kids get the support they need to make it. And so again, we're, you know, at the early stages. We had a lengthy discussion today about the development of these common formative assessments in terms of what is the best way to approach it so that teachers have ownership of them and, and use them with fidelity and that sort of thing. And I, I think in terms of what we fell upon, it's going to take a little bit longer for that development over time, but I think in the end, our goal is to eventually have those evolve into assessments that are not only building-wide but district-wide. And so we'd have common assessments, formative assessments that would be used in every third-grade classroom, so that not only can we see what's working for an individual teacher versus other teachers, but what's working for a particular team of teachers in one building versus another, not to criticize, but to try to leverage the success of ones, having to see if we can share that knowledge and that skill. Other things that jumped out to anyone on the chapter? I know that there was a comment, kind of a criticism about US school, I don't know if you want to talk about that?
It was just kind of interesting, and I was unaware, but it talks about that a study of American curriculum shows that there are more standards at each grade level in the United States than in the other nation. So it kind of, you know, and the, the chapter talks about how do you, how do you know what you're supposed to do as far as the objectives? How do you know which ones you're supposed to teach, because sometimes they can be too broad? You don't want your objectives to be so broad that they're containing different components, several different components, because especially in our younger grade, they're never going to get the concept if we try to throw it all at them at one time. So you've got to break those down and get those essential standards and get those pieces underneath. And it basically kind of gave the mile-wide, inch-deep theory, that there are so many standards that have to be taught in US curriculum as far as each state. So many that we're not really getting deep into those standards. Are kids really truly learning those at a deeper level, or is it more superficial? And it kind of infers that it's more of a superficial level since we have so many objectives in the United States. It talks about other countries narrowing down to very few objectives, so that they're really able to spend a lot of time digging deep on those concepts. And it is their key concepts, I don't know how they pick them, but it's, it's just, it's a lot fewer than we have, so they can, they have the ability to dig deep, so their kids have a deeper understanding of those few concepts. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Which becomes a debate, do we go broad or do we go deep? Exactly. And we find that argument, that debate in more than just this piece of education, we find it all over the place. So are we going to just cover a wide array and just get a very superficial meaning? Or are we going to go deep on a few things and really know what we're talking about?
So if you were to poll your teachers, how do you think they would respond to that, whether to be a mile wide or a mile deep?
My guess would be they'd want to go a mile deep.
Mile deep, thanks, okay.
I, I, you know, obviously, there's a, you, you're going to have to really know your material, really work together and be able to get those kids deeper. But, you know, when you look at, when you look at a Common Core map and you look at what the objectives are for each grade and each subject, it can be pretty overwhelming if you're a teacher. And I think about newer teachers and looking at that, and, you know, that's when I'm grateful that they have a team, and then this PLC thing actually helps those teachers with this piece also, because it's allowing them to focus and it's allowing the team to work together. And this one says, okay, thirty-five percent of my kids were, you know, below proficiency on the common formative assessment. And this one says, okay, thirty-five percent of my kids were, you know, below proficiency on the common formative assessment. Seventy-five percent of mine were above. Okay, what are you doing? What are you doing in your classroom? These are the problems. And, you know, when they take those common formative assessments, it's actually pretty cool to watch because they sit down and they don't just say, well, this one made three out of ten, this one made seven out of ten. They break it down and say, okay, this many kids missed this concept, this many missed this concept. So they're actually able to talk in those teams and say, okay, I'm not getting this, your kids did. What are you doing? And see if they're doing something different. So I would, you know, when you think about that, the PLC helps, that overwhelming feeling that teachers are going to get, but I think going deeper is definitely the way that teachers would wanna go.
Other comments? We will not be doing a chapter at our next meeting. We will be doing the subsequent quarterly evaluation in a closed session after the meeting. I would personally prefer that we spend our time doing that than discussing a chapter, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
So move chapter six to seven, no, seven two seconds.
That pushed them off that one very quickly.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other things? Paulette, you wanna discuss the school budget review?
This is the time of year that we need to certify our application to the Department of Ed by December first regarding our additional authority that we are seeking for our open enrollment out. Students that are here this year, but they weren't counted on last year's count. So if you remember, the, the money that is generated from the October two thousand seventeen certified enrollment is the funding that we're receiving this year. So we have ninety-three students this fall that are open enrolled out, but they were not open enrolled out with us a year ago. So we, in essence, aren't getting any funding for those students this year. So what the Department of Ed does is allows us to ask for the authority to pay that tuition bill. So we're asking for the authority of six hundred and twenty-five thousand eighty-three dollars and twenty cents for those ninety-three students. Out of those ninety-three students, forty-six percent of them are kindergarten, so that, that makes sense. And then the other fifty-four percent are just spread out across all the grades. So that kind of indicates the, the mobility that we see in the district. The other part of that is the ELL beyond five years. We get a small weighting for those students, and the amount that we are asking for there is one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. So altogether, we're asking for authority for just under one point eight, one million, seven, seven, nine, seven, oh, nine, twenty, that we will be asking for that authority because we're going to be spending that money.
Questions for Paulette?
I have a motion to approve the SBRC application for increasing enrollment, open enrollment out, and LEP instruction beyond five years in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents.
So move.
Second.
Hateman Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero.
So voluntary early retirement, I'll preface this with, we've got the three policies, which you also have under the policies section for amendment. You know, remember, we had the discussion and, and our concerns relative to the date of October thirty-first that was in that policy. So we changed that language to reflect after finalized certified enrollment has been made public. So we just essentially took the dates out. My guess is, based on the past two years, that we're probably looking at the first board meeting in November as that date for which certified enrollment would be made public in terms of when the state gives us permission to share that information, whether it be to the public or the media and that sort of thing. So we've, we've made those adjustments going forward. And if the board were to approve it, it would be contingent on those policy adjustments since we were kind of caught up on the October thirty-first date at the last meeting. The document that's titled Fiscal Year Nineteen Early Retirement Eligibility List, Paulette has pulled together a couple different documents here. The first one, and this was based on board members' request for more information and data, shows the true turnover savings that were derived from seven of the nine employees that took advantage of the early retirement incentive last year. The reason that it's only seven out of nine is that with two of the employees, and this often happens, as Mr. Spagettis can attest, we have an employee leave, we post their position, someone internal moves into that position, so they vacate a position which then becomes posted. Sometimes people internally move into their position. So until you get to the end of the line of actually having filled ultimately that, that final position, you don't know where that true savings is at. And it was just very difficult, in two cases, for that to be tracked back, I guess, from last year. But based on seven of the nine, you'll see that there was a saving, general fund savings of two hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty nine cent, thirty nine cents. Obviously, we have other people that choose to leave or retire by the end of the year as well. In many cases, maybe not all cases, there's additional savings there. In general, those savings oftentimes are what allows districts to balance budgets based on, you know, when negotiations wind up resulting in more new money or more new money being attributed to salary schedule than what came into the district as a result of student enrollment, the end of war, state supplemental aid increases. This is what allows that to work on the surface. It sounds like, how can you give away more money than what you bring in? Well, oftentimes that gets balanced out because there's no quantity of a certain degree that there's gonna be turnover savings to be had. The second page shows the, shows thirteen employees that we know of, based on the best of our information, are kind of in the position to be able to take advantage of the early retirement policy based on two different criteria. One is having served the district for fifteen or more years, which is a requirement of the policy. The second is meeting the rule of eighty-eight and being able to, to retire by first. Something that we don't necessarily know and/or have good records of is who has external years beyond the years that they've served in our district in an IFRS-related job. We should have it, but we don't necessarily have it. So what we, we started off, I think, with a list of about twenty-five or thirty names, and we narrowed down to the thirteen people that we know for sure, based on our records, who are in a position both needing our requirement for eligibility and the ones that we knew for sure met the rule of eighty-eight. There could, what I'm saying is, there could be a few more that are eligible, and we'll just have to figure that out by continuing to have good records and ask questions. When we asked, at board request, directors and administrators, including myself, to inquire of people in as non-threatening a way as possible what their intentions would be if this were offered, and to the best of my knowledge, at this time, it appears that three to five of the people, I would say, were leaning towards for sure taking advantage of it if it was offered. There probably were another three to, three or four that were big question marks, not sure, you know, would have to really look into things. And then there were a few people that were absolute knows whether it was offered or not, and that's pretty typical. In all my years of experience, a lot of people, for different reasons, do not wanna come forward with their intentions until it's absolutely the time to do so, like the deadline for it. And they have a lot of different reasons for that. Sometimes they don't want people making a big deal about it so they're gonna wait to the absolute last minute in order to make a decision. Some of them just struggle internally with whether it's the right time for them or not to do it. So as we said at the last meeting, it's, it's just a real hard thing to gauge for sure how many would take advantage of it. But, you know, just to give you an idea of potential turnover savings, we know that from what we looked at before, that seven people, and the way that the changeover happened, it was just under three hundred thousand dollars worth of savings. I think we had twenty-four new teachers this year, most of which were replacing others, not new positions or what have. So potential overall savings is significantly more when you think of it in terms of the total picture. And then the third sheet, Paulette, I'll let you talk about. This is in terms of the impact of the incentive over time to the tax rate and management fund.
So the early retirement incentive is funded one hundred percent by property taxes, so it does have an impact on your tax rate. And all of that revenue comes into the management fund then, and the benefits are paid out of the management fund. We currently have sixty-one retirees on our plan. And in, on the left-hand side in that box, you can see how many are on the plan from each year yet. So for example, fiscal eighteen, last year at the end of the year, we had nine early retirees come on the plan. If you look back to fiscal ten, we still have two individuals that are on the plan that are rolling off now. Our plan allows retirees to stay on the insurance for up to ninety-six months for age sixty-five, whichever comes first. So the younger somebody is when they retire, the more the liability is over time. So then we have mapped out, in the box on the right-hand side, we have mapped out what the current liability per year is for each of these, for all of these individuals. So for instance, this year, we know that we have just about five hundred thousand dollars that we are paying out for the current year. My forty-seven cents dropped off of there for some reason. The property tax impact based on current valuations for this year is forty-seven cents. At the end of this year, there will be eleven, or sometime during this year, there will be eleven individuals that either hit sixty-five or they hit the end of that ninety-six months, so they will fall off the plan. And that just kind of shows you what the property tax impact would be for the next several years based on current valuations and current insurance costs. So these are estimates, these will change. But the, the, the best information that we have available right now, we currently have about a two million dollar liability out there for these benefits.
As we've talked about before, the, the pool of eligible employees to take advantage of this opportunity is shrinking. And it's shrinking as a result of us being at the tail end of the baby boomers. So, you know, when I got into the profession, in most districts, sixty percent or more of employees were fifteen or more years' experience on the job and probably master's degree and above. Now sixty percent of them are on the lower end of that spectrum in terms of years' experience. And, and that coupled with the fact that we tend to have probably a little higher turnover than others lends itself to a younger employee base as well. So I think it's pretty safe to say, if offered, that we'll have fewer people coming on that are probably going off in the years to come, which means it shouldn't have a further negative impact on the tax rate. It may drop a little bit as people take advantage of it if offered in the next few years. And we, we, we've seen those numbers drop in, you know, the last three, four, five years too in terms of who's eligible and who winds up taking advantage of it.
Because the only benefit that an early retiree receives is the healthcare paid for either ninety-six, I'm sorry?
In life.
Health and life. And is that this eight thousand eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents that you have in your first bridge, bridge per year, per person?
No, that is the actual cost for all of their, their benefits. So that could be health, vision, dental, and life.
And so how much, so that, so they get their health and life paid? How much is that at today's rates?
It depends on which plan they are on because it, so, for instance, if they're on the family plan when they retire, the district continues to pay for the family plan. So if they're very young and, and have that full ninety-six months of eligibility, over time, with that family plan, you could be in the ninety thousand dollar range in there.
That, that, that the early retirement benefit benefits the retiree to the two hundred ninety thousand dollars?
Yes.
Could be at the high end?
Yes.
Over an eight-year.
Over an eight-year period.
Yes.
And so for these sixty-one people that we have on the plan, so to speak, right now, have you, you've calculated down to the penny, at today's rates, what you think that liability will cost? How about the savings for those sixty-one people? So we did this, save money, right?
For your savings, there's only one, you get one year, right?
Well, it should be, it, it, I mean, if somebody is making fifty thousand and you hire somebody thirty, you save twenty in the first year, right?
Right.
And then maybe they go to thirty-two, then the second year's eighteen, then maybe they go to thirty-five, fifteen.
Yeah, but the fifty's gonna keep going up incrementally as well. So you're only, you're only gonna get at that, see that savings at first, that's how I look at it, is it savings for the first year only?
It is? I don't understand that.
Well, the person who retired would have also been presumably receiving a salary increase, is that what you're getting at, Ross?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you, I suppose you could look at it as taking that, you know, based on that sheet that we provided, the savings that we know, seven people's changeover generated two hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty nine cents times eight.
Were, are you looking at it as the person that's making, say, fifty thousand versus the new hire at thirty thousand? There's a twenty thousand dollar delta that's gonna last as long as that fifty thousand dollar person would have been employed, right?
Yeah. And so how do you calculate whether this is good for the district or bad for the district for these sixty-one people?
Well, I guess part, part of it in my mind is, is that when districts find themselves in a position to go to the SBRC because they're in a precarious position with their budget and the unspent authority that they have, probably the third bullet point that they ask them is, have you considered offering an early retirement program in order to? in order to build up your general fund? By getting your most expensive employees off the roster and hiring younger, less expensive employees for them?
So, it's more like the impact of that relief on the general fund for that first year?
Well, it's more than for, like Mike said, it's more than the first year.
It's more than that, but that's where you budget from and that's how you work on them.
I don't know, I think we would look at it as that new salary is a one-time savings. It's not a year-on-year. Otherwise, you'd have to go back and guesstimate these 61 people, how long would they have worked? And then you're just making numbers up to try to show it savings that you couldn't verify for a million dollars, right?
Okay, okay, so we'll assume you're, we'll assume that's right, maybe, that might be right.
Right, you would, because you don't know. You don't know when the person who did retire would have kept going. So, if you're trying to prove that true savings, you're just guessing.
But, so if you're right, then you estimate we can save $248,000, right? Was that on your first sheet?
Off the general fund.
That was what was saved last year, with seven people taking advantage.
Okay, $248,000 was saved last year, and how much did it cost us last year?
It depends on how old each of those individuals were, because there were some of them that were closer to age 65. So, they are only getting insurance and insurance benefit for a handful of months versus somebody that took it, that was 55, that it is going to get a benefit for 96 months. So, it depends on everybody's age when they retire.
So, just based on this, it's $248,000 savings, but there's the additional insurance cost that we paid
out of the management.
Each one of those retirees, new retirees, somewhere north of $500 a month for each one of them.
For each of the last several years, the management fund has had about half a million dollars of expense for this program.
So, it's not really, we're not really saving 248. Comparing headcount to headcount, we are, but the retirees, we have an additional expense that's not factored into the 248.
You're saving general fund dollars and you're paying it out of the management fund.
You also have to take into consideration that we have a decreasing enrollment year coming up. And this gives us, that's when the tool kicks in and it gives us an opportunity to not rehire if we have a lower student count or adjust there.
Would you use your microphone?
It's on. Did you hear me?
Yeah, you're saying we may not have replaced one of the people.
Right, it's always, not always a tangible number that you can come up with, is my point.
And what we offer is not uncommon or unusual by any stretch in comparison to other districts that offer an early retirement incentive. I've seen many that offer more, they offer insurance and maybe a stipend, or if they're really in a position of needing to cut costs, sometimes they further incentivize it. There are some districts, instead of it being insurance, offer a stipend. And then that stipend is put in a vehicle, tax-free vehicle, for which they can apply if they so choose to insurance premiums and that sort of thing. But it's pretty typical for districts that offer some form of early retirement to at a minimum offer coverage of insurance for a period of time, whether it be five years, eight years, or what have. I think it used to be up to 10 years for many districts until some of the accounting laws and such came into play where people became concerned about the liability part of it, and so they looked at different ways of doing it. I guess the other thing that I would say, and this is a little contrary to my philosophy historically, I've always been one who has said that this should be offered only when it's going to serve the district purpose as a financial tool. And I still feel that, but I don't think it should ever be completely taken off of the docket, you know, as a viable financial tool to be used by a district. The other thing that I would say, and I've come to appreciate this over the three years that I've done here, is that our people work extremely hard, and particularly our teachers, at trying to do everything within their power to serve every single student that they have. Many of our students and their families come with terrific burdens and barriers to being successful. And my belief is that many of our employees carry those burdens on behalf of their students and their families as they're trying to help them be positioned for better success. That takes a toll on people over time. Teaching is, if it's done well, is physically draining, but you have the emotional drain and psychological drain of carrying that burden for kids as well. And so, from that standpoint, I feel very strongly that by offering something like this to our eligible employees at times where it makes sense for the district to do so, kind of in conjunction with what Matt and Rachel said, I really think it's taking care of our people for a period of time after they've provided us service. And I think it's totally appropriate to do so.
So, Paulette, you said that someone could cost us $90,000, right, over the 96 months? Could be as high as $90,000. How much will that one person on average save us over the same period in salary reduction? I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I am having such trouble understanding the cost savings, but it seems very unclear. So, let's just take it to one person.
I guess it would depend on if the only reason they retired was due to the incentive, or would they have retired anyway without the incentive?
So, you can have just as many assumptions in coming up with a $90,000 number that you were so easily able to come up with and spit out. So, let's just, give me the number.
Well, you can look at last year's people, and you see that some of them generated a turnover savings of $32,000. Some of them generated a negative because they were replaced with people that were more costly. And some of them, because they didn't get replaced, saved the district the full cost, $82,000. So, it does vary depending on the circumstances.
So, the one on the bottom there is an MA 4527, I believe that is our, what was, I used step? So, a maximum of about $94,000 if they're not replaced.
That's if they're not replaced.
Right.
So, look at the second person. Let's do this quickly, like in our heads. A retiree replaced by a BA5, which is essentially the first step on our pay scale. The fifth step is our first step. So, let's say we've saved $50,000 the first year. And let's say that the raise on the base is $3,000. Not going to happen in this lifetime, but let's say that it's $3,000. So, the BA is going up to 48. And we still, if the, let's just leave it at the $93,000 instead of raising them to $3,000 as well. So, now, this year, we've saved 46, 45. So, when you take somebody that's a high earner and replace them with a low one, you're going to save tons every year.
Okay, I totally get that. Totally understand that math.
Right.
Understand the way it works. Why can't somebody go back and tell me exactly for those 61 people, how much money we've saved?
It's just labor-intensive to do that for everybody who's retired. I think that's asking a lot of our people. If you can see the savings in one year, you're going to know exactly.
For that person?
For that person.
For that person.
And you have listed on this sheet, everybody who retired last year. We don't have any, except the two that it was a domino effect in filling that position. So, if you take that money and look at it by merely dropping, you know, the raise on the base, which we know is squat at this particular point, and because of our declining enrollment from this year, it's going to be even less in two years, we know that the legislature at IASB is saying, bend on, get down on bended knee and say thank you for a 1%, there's not going to be much of a raise. So, we're going to save that amount every year until that person reaches that position of MA 45 with 27 years of experience. So, we're going to save that for 22 years. Not just the quote 96 months or whatever it is.
And in your example there of the $48,000 delta, what's not included is the first year of insurance coverage that we pay for, for that retiree, right? Which depending on their program, could be, say, $500 a month times 12, so it'd be another $6,000 of expense for that retiree that's not shown there, right? So, the 48 is really maybe 42 or 41,000. So, if you took that times all seven, then it's another 40,000 less, and that drops down to 280, turns into 240, maybe, give or take 5,000 either way, right? So, it's still about a quarter million dollars.
Yeah, which is a significant amount to put into the general fund.
Well, I'm not, I'm just talking through it.
Right, yeah. But I think that the point that we need to understand is that the significant value to the district is to have that money in general fund where we can use for any purpose. And our general fund is going to become less with declining enrollment and a pittance of new money. So, I think futureistically, if that's really a word, it's kind of a no-brainer to me. We need the money in the general fund. How can we get more money into the general fund? We can raise taxes. So, if we raise taxes to support the money in the general fund, that's an automatic. We haven't changed the rate on management fund for some time. And in the projections that Paulette gave us, the tax rate for the management fund is going to go down over the next 10 years. So, I see it as pretty obvious that we need the money in the general fund, and this is one way to get it there.
It's trending in the right direction anyway.
Well, I don't think there's any question to that, Bea. I think we're just trying to understand, we don't have many opportunities to go out and find a quarter of a million dollars, right, that we can add back in.
Correct.
So, it's just a, the questions are just trying to understand, my questions at least, I can't speak for Mike, but I'm just trying to, I very much appreciate all the work. I don't think we need to go back and look at the 61 people, I don't think that gets us much. But just trying to understand what it is, and whether it's 250 or 220, it's a significant amount of money.
Yes.
And then you have the question of the three to five that are serious and the three to five that aren't sure. And in your head, Dr. Shu, you've got to be thinking, maybe this person, we won't have to backfill, but these other ones, we absolutely will. And I surely don't want to ask you what you think of those, because that's, we have no reason to even ask that question or answer it until we know for sure who's stayed and who goes. So, it's a lot of money that we're talking about in a situation where we need every possible dollar that we can get.
Our hopes would be that we would have latitude and flexibility through open positions to make whatever adjustments that we need to make without displacing people that otherwise would be employed.
Yep, understood.
Other comments, questions? May I have a motion to approve the MCSD voluntary early retirement incentive program as presented, contingent upon the approval of 6.01?
So moved.
Harris Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, six-zero. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to the actual policy.
Yeah, so for second reading, we have...
This will actually be a first reading because there's a change in it.
Yeah.
But, no, we can make, go ahead. Pretend it's a second reading. And then I'll word the...
It's really a third.
I'll read the motion.
So, as I shared earlier, we made an additional adjustment based on our discussion at board table last meeting, striking the date of October 30th and placing it with after the final A certified enrollment has been made public, which we all know will generally be around the time of our first meeting in November.
Questions for Dr. Shu? I have a motion to approve the amendment and waive the second reading for 407.6 and 413.7.
So moved.
Carter Hartman, Carter Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, six-zero.
The next three policies were all new policies that were brought before you at the last meeting. 505.8 on parent and family engagement, 604.6, structuring of pro-secondary educational institutions, and 604.6R1, the regulation for that policy on pro-secondary. I would recommend adopting these new policies and waiving the second reading.
Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman, Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, six-zero.
Is that one mine, the 607 one?
Yeah.
So, that's, the student guidance and counseling, it's a renumber, and then there was a change, change the word equal to equitable.
So, we have 505.8, 604.6, 604.6R1, and 607.1. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is that your second?
312.3 is the exhibit one, is the...
Are you good?
Fringe benefits for administrators and supervisors. This evolved out of discussion that we've had since the fall where it came to my attention, although we didn't have it in writing, that our 12-month administrators and our directors have the latitude to use their previous years accumulated. have, uh, the latitude to use their previous years accumulated vacation through July of the next year, as long as they're continued employment with the district. So this is just simply putting it in writing so that, um, in the future, there is no further confusion and angst over that.
Any questions? You have two new policies, nine oh three one and nine oh four one.
Yeah, nine oh, um, three point one on school community groups, uh, we're proposing is a new policy that really kind of came about as I was, uh, putting together, um, a presentation for IASB on N D A. And with all of the significant efforts that we've been doing in terms of building volunteer services and stuff, I just feel it's very important that we have that policy along with our others in place. And then nine oh four point one is a policy that really represents, for the most part, a practice that we have in the district, which is kind of a practice of last resort. All other efforts fail with school and or parent transportation. Oftentimes, our administrators, counselors, nurses might get put, sometimes teachers, in a position of needing to transport a kid from point A to point B to get him home or whatever. And so this policy simply gives us, uh, the ability to do that.
So what, what does that mean where it says, uh, funds raised by these groups may be kept as part of the accounts of the school district?
Under the school community group.
Under the first one.
So if we have a new group and they go out and fundraise, who manages the funds? If it says, may be kept as part of the school district, does that mean a teacher or an administrator or somebody with, or a student could keep the funds or? How does that, any idea what that, 'cause I remember a couple of years ago, we had an issue with, uh, sports teams going out and raising money, and then the funds weren't available 'cause they've been used by the, I think it was the football team, I don't remember.
It was, yeah, it was like girls softball, raise money for uniforms, and then their money was used to buy something for some other team.
Football uniforms or whatever.
Yeah, so I think we fixed that, but I'm just trying to, are we gonna run into the same thing here? How do we ensure we don't if we have a new club?
That example was within the confines of the athletic fund. So then, does that mean that the softball club account stays within the softball club account? Or how does that work within that? 'Cause I know that they're broken, the athletic fund is broken down into all those different, correct?
Yeah, I think, um, what you're referencing was totally, um, an internal decision on how to utilize money that was housed within, that was housed generally regardless of who contributed it into the IASB account. I think this is speaking more about, um, like, for example, I've seen booster club groups.
Yeah, that'd be a good.
Those funds are within the context of the school district, but it's a separate account for which they have discretion as to how those funds are being used by the district. Houses the, the funds.
Does the district currently house the booster club funds?
I'm just saying there's districts that do.
Okay.
And, uh, or could be P T A funds, you know, most probably.
So that's a completely different example than what we were, what we saw before. 'Cause that was, that was money within, uh, the actual.
Yeah, that's where the money was being deposited for, through fundraising for athletic, a specific athletic purpose into the athletic.
By us fundraising, funding or education, yeah.
And then the administrators were determining how those funds were being used.
Guess that's different.
Yeah.
Good question. So is that clear or not? It's clear, once explained, it, um, I wonder if we could word that maybe a little bit better so that it's clear to the public. Or clear to future boards of the administration. Yeah.
'Cause I, I'm just thinking if you, if, if there's a new group, let's say we didn't have a robotics group, and the robotics club starts, and they go out and fundraise, and the robotics club is led by a teacher, they go out and fundraise and they raise a thousand dollars, who controls that money? This says, if I'm reading it right, it may be kept as part of the accounts of the school district, which would mean it doesn't have to be, I'm not the attorney.
May is not shall.
May, right?
Yeah.
So there's.
So for example, could you say that, maybe say outside group, meaning not a school-connected group? Or, I don't know how you describe that, how you differentiate funding raised through a school group? Like, what's the difference between funding raised by the robotics team versus funding raised by the booster club? Is this something that the finance committee would like to write? No, we can do that. Okay. Okay. So we have three twelve point three E one returning. We have bless you nine oh four point one transporting students returning. And nine oh three point one is going to the finance committee for a rewrite. Mr. Miller?
Yep, I have five, uh, policies on my docket this time. First one is six oh four point two, health services. Um, we'd like to renumber this policy to be consistent with IASB's numbering system, from six oh four point two to six oh seven to point two. And only other changes to this policy are very minor, adding the word district in front of director, changing the title to student health services instead of just health services to be consistent with IASB.
So you are suggesting that we would mark this as reviewed?
That's what I would suggest.
Okay.
Next one, um, six oh four point six is a new policy, with a new name called private disruption. So I guess the recommendation is to delete our six oh four point six, that was called competent private disruption, and adopt this new policy that's consistent with IASB called private disruption, still the same number, six oh four point six.
So you would make a motion to delete six oh four point six?
Old six oh four point six and adopt new six oh four point six, yes.
Which is six oh four point one.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
Six oh four point one will need to come back, but six oh four point six can be deleted if you so move.
Yes. Yes, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries, six zero. Six oh four point seven.
Six oh four point seven, dual enrollment. Uh, this is very similar to IASB's policy. It's just very minor changes and some wording about the dates. I would recommend this is just marked as review.
Okay. Six oh four point eight.
Six oh four point eight. Uh, again, I think we should just review this on December fourth, two thousand seventeen. So, uh, I think we want to, do we want to renumber this to be consistent with IASB?
No, we just need to mark it as.
We just need to mark it as reviewed so that it puts it in the cycle at the right time.
Got it.
Okay.
And then the last one, homeschool assistance program there, and I think your recommendation was that we delete this policy. We're not required to have one, IASB doesn't have one, so you'd like us to delete the policy altogether.
Yeah, we're not required to have one, and we don't have one, so there's no reason for us to have a policy on it, which might make people to think we have one.
Do you leave that in motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second. Miller, Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, homeschool assistance program is deleted. Thank you. You have two new ones?
Still?
Oh, no. It's just a repeat of those two. Okay. Mr. Potter, anything of note?
Um, just following up with Mr. Miller's question about spring break. MCC is a week ahead of the regents this year and next school year, so, so they don't align, so.
Thanks.
Looking at reminders, we have a board work session on Monday for, uh, working with Becker and Associates. The next regular school board meeting is December third. And I get to do policies. Uh, looking at committee reports, seven point oh three. Corina, anything to share on school improvement advisory?
I did, I did. Or did, I did?
Oh, you did.
Yes, I agree. Okay, yes. Okay, um, I think it was a great turnout, for sure. We pretty much filled this room. It was great. Um, we had a lot of community people, it was a very diverse group. Uh, we went through the strategic plan and through our mission, um, so. It was a really good meeting because it kind of started off on the foundation of what was the purpose of the meeting is and kind of gave an overview of what we've been doing throughout and what our goals are, so. I thought it was really good. Um, I hope people continue to attend. Um, it was great to work in teams and groups, so.
Anything to add, Dr. Stevenson?
Um, at the end, we kind of laid the foundation about, um, reviewing the college and career readiness, ballot ready work. And then got the group thinking about, um, what a portrait of a graduate would look like for Marshalltown, with that, knowing that we have that in place, and what kind of life skills that kids would need also to be successful in college or career. Um, and so we need to get in February, and they were, got homework, they got an article to read between now and February, and we're gonna keep working on that process, so. I think we had forty, forty-two people here, and it was good.
Mistress Spargitas.
Yes, me too.
B N G L M C.
Yes, uh, we talked about, did a summary of, uh, this past summer's summer cleaning. Uh, we talked about some of the, uh, extra items that are being left behind by teachers in the summer that are somewhat difficult for custodial staff to, to move. And they were asking some questions about whether they're responsible for cleaning those or not. Uh, Chuck was gonna speak to the principals about that. And then also, there were some questions about different rugs that are being brought into classrooms by teachers that maybe don't need fire code, and so that was another thing that Chuck and Travis were gonna follow up on. Um, also talked about just a process for when rovers come to a building and remove something, you know, make sure it's getting put back in the place, or they need to let people know when it's being removed. Other than that, whatever, just a few other minor issues specific to one or two buildings.
I A S B, Janelle?
I was there on Thursday of last week, and I guess my highlight was, um, the speaker that we had at nine in the morning. Um, his name was Matt Bodo, I think is how you pronounce it. And he spoke to us about generational gaps. Um, so one of the things that I thought might be fun, just to kind of demonstrate what he talked about, I think Paulette has a little more information, but just at our board table, I think we have probably four different generations. So I would be a baby boomer who's a millennial. Sean?
Well, do you have, what's years?
It's like sixty, anyway.
Sixty-four is last year of baby boomers.
Sixty-four is the last year of the baby boomers.
And it's Gen X.
And then it's Gen X, then it's millennial, then it's Gen Z, and then I'm not sure, maybe it's Gen one. But the point of it was that each generation comes from a different vantage point and has a different way of communicating. And I think the obvious one is the difference between a typical baby boomer and a millennial. So, you know, you've got all your notes on your phone, and that's how you communicate, and that's how you keep information, but a baby boomer might keep it in a notebook or. And so it was just trying to open up your eyes to the different methods of communication and how you can make it better within your workplace, so. That's kind of the, the very, very trimmed down, brief version of it. I thought it was fascinating, I've been thinking about it all week. It was really funny, he, he presented it in a really lighthearted manner, and, um, I got a lot out of it. Like, one of the things that he said, that, I mean, you're not a, a baby boomer, you.
Gen X.
Gen X. So one of the thing about a Gen X generation is they love data. So we just saw that demonstration.
It's all right, I'm Gen X too.
So, and then.
Set you up for that one, didn't she?
So, and one of the things he did at one point was he said, all baby boomers raise their hand. And he goes, oh yeah, all you guys with watches on. So, I mean, he made it really fun, and, and it did kind of make me think a little bit more. I mean, my kids are all millennials and Gen Y, Gen Z.
Gen Y.
Gen Y, I don't know. Gen X, whatever. So it, it, and we do communicate differently, and it just kind of opened up our, my, my eyes to, to that issue.
You converted all of your notes to a phone, I noticed.
I took my notes on this phone at the meeting. Maybe I hung around with millennials too much, but, yeah.
Then why do you have them written on paper in front of you?
I did, I wanted to pare it down.
So uncomfortable, the phone.
During the meeting. Yeah. So that was my.
You pulled some data, didn't you?
I did. I, I too found, um, this, his presentation really fascinating. So I spent some time on Saturday looking at their website. They have a really good website. Um, he, Matt Boudreau, I think. Um, he is a certified speaker for the Center of, for Generational Athletics. Um, if you have a chance to go out and look at their website, there is a lot of information out there. But I, being a Gen X person that loves data also, I pulled our staff and divided them out into the different generations.
Just for fun on a Saturday.
Just for fun.
She likes data.
It was that or clean my oven.
So does the oven still need to be cleaned?
Yes.
Ask for baby boomer to do it.
I'd like to put it more hours.
So, I mean, he talked about how we, for the first time ever, have five different generations all working, um, together in organizations and, and the challenges that that presents. Um, with, so interestingly enough, within our total staff, forty-three percent are millennials. Millennial, Gen Y is anybody born nineteen ninety-six or later. So we only have two and a half percent in Gen Y. Um, the millennials or Gen Z, um, we have forty-three percent. That was nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen ninety-five. Gen X is sixty-five to seventy-six, we have twenty-five percent there. Boomers, forty-six to sixty-four, we have twenty-six percent. And then traditionalists, we have two point six percent in our total staff.
What years are traditionalists?
Nineteen forty-five and before. Within just our teaching staff, fifty-four percent are millennials. And they have a really neat study out there too, that they do each year, called the State of Gen Z. It's, it's a good read too.
Okay. Okay. Corina?
I did learn data. Don't expect that, right? I also enjoyed, you know, the convention. It was my first time, so I was, I didn't know what to expect. It's a little bit different than what I'm used to as far as conferences. The keynote speakers were really funny. I think they had a lot. I really liked this guy. I caught a little bit of him in the morning, getting there. So I thought it was really good. But I also went to his breakout session, which talked a lot about relationship building in the community, within the community with the schools and how to provide that school information to parents and the generation differences about text messaging, Facebook. Older generations providing flyers, still posting things up in coffee shops. So it was just the different ways of providing communication, you know, communication to different parents as well as grandparents. The one I found, I think, a little bit more data driven and interesting and within my job and within the school board, I think it was the, the last one, which was the, the new Iowa assessments. It really talked about how, what's a little bit different and me having to explain to parents how to, what's different between it. So I found that a little bit more informational for me personally, as a parent.
And that was a breakout session?
That was a breakout session.
Okay, what have we done this evening to make education better for the students at our district?
Well, we didn't mention, but we spent some money to clean up around the Rogers track with, I assume was a lot of tornado debris.
Well, actually, do you wanna explain that one more?
Yeah, it actually was a result of what was left behind after they razed the properties that were.
Oh, so what was the properties, okay. So that's good. Safety.
Absolutely.
Great thing.
I thought it was great to hear from Manson tonight. Sounds like they're making some headway with attendance, which obviously now is critical.
I was electrified though. I mean, you think three schools, but they're really focused on mentoring.
Well, my quote for this evening comes from Vince Lombardi. I thought all of the athletes in the crowd would be excited. And we haven't talked about teamwork for quite some time. And based on the team award that we received from I A S B and the work that board members have done over the last year together as a group. He says, individual commitment to a group effort. That's what makes a team work, a company work, a society work, or a civilization work. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Carter Hernandez, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We are adjourned.